We were called to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Tuesday, September 5, 2023. I would ask that you all please rise for brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, in the heat of the day, we are asking for community support in a variety of fashions. One is we have had a significant rise in the number of ambulance calls that we have experienced in Batavia recently, and many of these are involving either auto accidents, many of them of which are bad, or mental illnesses, which has really risen to a new high dimension in Batavia. And we just ask for some blessings upon both of these areas, that Batavia, along with others around us, can find a way to kind of bring down some of the bad side of the world that we are dealing with here on an ongoing basis. Tonight, as always, we also want to remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask for a special blessing to be showered upon each one of these men and women as they go about their vital mission. Tonight, the City Council, we ask for direction and vision and understanding and agreement as we act on the items before us, and we also want to ask for a special blessing on all Batavians who are in some degree infirmed or sick or ill, and that they all are on their way to quick return. And I might note that we are very proud and thankful that Alderman Wolf has been able to join us at the meeting tonight, and we just wish him the very best in the days ahead. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman Wolf, you want to lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, the righteous saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask that the clerk please call the roll.
Miller. Lancy.
Here.
Beck. Peeper.
Here.
Chantet.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Uer.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
Vogelsinger.
Here.
Twelve present, two absent.
We have the necessary quorum to conduct tonight's business. That's good. Moving then to item number four, a reminder from the chair, if you're going to speak to us tonight, we ask that you please come up and use the podium and the mic that's there, because without it, you're not easily heard on BATV, which is photographing this meeting and will be replaying it over the next couple of weeks. Moving then to item number five, are items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda? Do we have anything from the council? All right. Moving then to item number six is the consent agenda. Alderman Chantet, do you have that to read?
I do indeed. Your Honor, the consent agenda, I'll read as follows. To accept, place, and file the historical preservation minutes for July 24, 2023. Approvals: September 1, 2023 payroll in the amount of $988,089.92. The accounts payable check register in the amount of $1,390,683.71. Ordinance 23-41, amending the official zoning map from R-0, single-family to PFI public facilities and institutional for 1535 South Batavia Avenue. Resolution 23-105-R, authorizing execution of a contract with Everlast Blacktop Inc. for the 2023 CBBG new sidewalk installation project in amount not to exceed $132,590.70, which includes a 10% continued CMI. Resolution 23-104-R, authorizing an agreement with Qualtrics for resident and business experience management software. Resolution 23-108-R, authorizing purchase of two fire department administrative vehicles. Approval class E, one club unlimited liquor license for Batavia Moose Lodge 682, located at 1535 West Batavia Avenue. Approval class G, special use liquor license for the Batavia Park District, clients by the Palm event, that's on September 23, 2023. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Motion in second for the approval of the consent agenda. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Twelve yes, no, no, two absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving then to item seven, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anything this evening? Guess we don't. So Chief, I'll recognize you. He's going to prepare us for the oath of office to newly appointed Sergeant Richard Hall for the Batavia Police Department.
Hi, good evening. I'm happy to announce that earlier this evening, at Board of Fire and Police Commission meeting, the board has selected to fill an upcoming vacancy in the police sergeant ranks with Rich Hall. This vacancy was created by the retirement of Watch Commander Eric Mathewson, or will be created by the retirement of Watch Commander Eric Mathewson this coming Saturday, September 9. So Sergeant Hall's promotion will be effective as of this coming Saturday, September 9. Sergeant Hall joined the Batavia Police Department in 2008, after three years of experience as a law enforcement officer in Huntley, Illinois. Rich attended and graduated from the Police Training Institute in Champaign, Illinois. Rich is a graduate of Carl Sandberg High School in Orland Park. In 2005, he earned a bachelor's degree in business from St. Norbert College in Deep Pier, Wisconsin. Since joining the department, he has served in a variety of roles, including patrol officer, traffic enforcement unit officer, detective, and patrol officer in charge. Earlier this year, Rich accepted a position as a temporary sergeant. He admirably served in this position for a four-month period to fill for an injured supervisor. Sergeant Hall's personal awards include numerous letters of recognition and commendation for excellence in police and investigative work. In 2013, Rich was recognized as the Batavia Police Officer of the Year Award winner. In 2017, Rich won a life-saving award for his quick response and actions in saving a citizen who was suffering from a drug overdose. Rich has long been an informal leader with our department, and I am pleased to have him join our supervisory team as a patrol sergeant. Sergeant Hall will be assigned to the midnight shift, where he will supervise alongside of Watch Commander James Nattan. Congratulations, Rich.
We're going to get you here. No, this way, because we have the camera right there. If you raise your right hand and repeat after me, I instate your name.
I, Richard Hall.
Having been promoted to the position of sergeant.
Having been promoted to the position of sergeant.
Within the Batavia Police Department.
Within the Batavia Police Department.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I support the position of sergeant.
That I will support the position of sergeant.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And I will carry forth my duties.
With honor and appreciation. With honor and appreciation. Thank you.
We've had a little bit of a glitch here in the next part of the agenda, because we're item 10, we're going to have a proclamation honoring the Batavia Chamber of Commerce for its 70th year. I just talked with Margaret, and she has decided that she would like to have this proclamation presented first, and then she will give her report on the chamber after. So I guess Alderman Chantet's the one that's supposed to be reading the proclamations, but he says he didn't get this, so I'll have to deal with that tomorrow. And let me try to read this the best I can. I'm right in the process of having my contact lenses changed, so I don't have the strongest contacts, so I'm making my excuse before I read this, so I think it'll come out okay. It says, "Whereas the Batavia Chamber of Commerce has diligently served as a cornerstone of the business community, providing unwavering support, resources, and opportunities for local businesses to thrive. And whereas, for seven decades, the Batavia Chamber of Commerce has been an essential catalyst for business prosperity and economic growth in our community, promoting programs that impact the business landscape, offering network avenues, networking avenues, fostering community business interreaction, and offering critical sources of advice. And whereas, the Batavia Chamber of Commerce has consistently demonstrated its commitment to the betterment of our community, working tirelessly to establish and maintain relationships between the business and the public. And whereas, the Batavia Chamber of Commerce provided valuable support in the Batavia community throughout the COVID crisis, providing valuable information and notifying residents of resources and opportunities for financial assistance in this crisis. And whereas, the Batavia Chamber of Commerce has embraced innovative and adaptive ideas involving its events and programs to meet the dynamic needs of a changing time, while remaining steadfast in its mission to support our town. And whereas, the Batavia Chamber of Commerce has been a shining example of community collaboration, partnering with various organizations, both profit and nonprofit, and focusing on an enhanced quality of life for all residents. And whereas, the Batavia Chamber of Commerce has exemplified a spirit of inclusiveness by championing local businesses and supporting them through initiatives such as the Chamber Bucks Program, the Grow Your Business Scholarship Program, scholarships for students, and promotion of local commerce. And whereas, the Batavia Chamber of Commerce's commitment to progress is evident through its role in our many events, such as ribbon cuttings, groundbreakings, its annual Inspire Awards, and its annual golf outing, fostering a sense of community pride and connection. Now therefore, on this, the September 5, 2023, the Batavia City Council officially acknowledges and commends the Batavia Chamber of Commerce on the occasion of its 70th birthday. We recognize and honor the Chamber for its unwavering dedication to guiding, inspiring, and promoting our member businesses, and for its pivotal role in enhancing the economic vitality of our town. And we extend our gratitude to the Chamber for its tireless efforts in advocating for business, building relationships, and providing educational opportunities that benefit our community as a whole. We celebrate the Chamber's storied history, its commitment to its growth and adaption, and its ongoing dedication to the betterment of Batavia. On behalf of the City Council and its entire community, we express our heartfelt congratulations to the Batavia Chamber of Commerce for reaching this remarkable milestone, and we look forward to many more years of collaboration, progress, and shared success. Signed by myself as the mayor." Would somebody care to make a motion to approve the proclamation? Moved. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second of Alderman Lehman. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Chantet.
Aye.
Twelve yes, no, no, two absent.
Motion's approved. So on behalf of the city of Batavia, why don't we get up here in front of the camera?
... President Obama, Xi, Shirley Ma, the Communications Services Specialist, and Jessica McGrail, the owner of Dollar and Sense Bookkeeping, to rejoice in receiving this proclamation. Thanks, Mayor.
Very good. Here's the proclamation. It's well-deserved, and we appreciate all the great things the Batavia Chamber of Commerce has done these many years. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to you for your proposal.
Thank you, Mayor. What an honor. It is such a... I'm so grateful to be in this role at this point of the organization's history. Seventy years is a wonderful, remarkable milestone, and I'm very happy about that and look forward to seventy more wonderful, remarkable years. So thank you, City Council. Thank you very much, Mayor. I wanted to begin tonight just by extending a warm welcome to all the businesses that have joined the Batavia Chamber of Commerce over the past month. We are delighted to have SciTech, Vane Specialists of Geneva, McNally's Heating and Cooling, 101 Mobility of Naperville, and Empower HR as part of our growing Chamber community. The Chamber recently announced with great pride that Kathy Barkey is being honored as our 2023 Donna Dallas Sassy Award winner. Donna Dallas Sassy was the executive director of the Batavia Chamber from 1983 to the year 2000, and was an amazing individual whose vision helped shape the city and business community. The Donna Dallas Sassy Award is given annually to recognize a Chamber member for outstanding commitment and dedication to the Chamber's mission, vision, and values. Kathy has a long history of selflessly supporting the mission and vision of the Batavia Chamber, as well as Batavia in general. Kathy will be honored at the Chamber Chairs, formerly known as Harvest Celebration, on Thursday, October 5, at 6:00 p.m. at Enticing Cuisine, where we will be celebrating our 70th anniversary that we just received the proclamation for. I invite all of you to attend this wonderful event to celebrate the Chamber's success and milestone anniversaries for our members. And a bonus is, one recipient for just attending will receive a door prize of $1,000 of Chamber bucks to celebrate. So definite incentive to come join us in our celebration. Casual attire, that's a perk, and registration is available on our website. I want to let you know about another special event the Chamber is hosting on Tuesday, September 12, from 5 to 8. It's called Eye on Aging. It's a new event that the Chamber has put together. It will be held at the Eastside Community Center. The event is focused on planning a successful retirement and creating an intentional healthy aging strategy. By visiting vendor booths, attendees can discover local resources, interact with experts, and gain valuable information. Breakout presentations will address aspects of aging, including estate planning, financial planning, aging in place, and Medicare. The event is geared to those in their 40s and up who want to age healthy and happily. Care partners and soon-to-be care partners will find useful information at the event. There is no cost to attend, and all are welcome, so please let people know. We're excited about this new event. The Chamber is pleased to announce a second year of the successful Grow Your Business Scholarship Program. The Chamber again has dedicated $10,000 to develop the skills our businesses need to excel in any environment. The Chamber's role is to help business owners build sustainable businesses, and to this end, we have partnered with the Fox Valley Entrepreneurship Center. This year, we have eight applicants to the program, and two candidates will be selected. To tell you a little bit more about the program, I would like to invite Sarah Witt up from the House of 423. She was the recipient of one of last year's awards. Can we come on up, Sarah?
Thanks, Margaret. So I am Sarah Witt. I own House of 423, which is right in downtown at Tenny's Wilson. So I am thankfully the first graduate of the Grow Your Business Scholarship, which I honestly wouldn't have known about it unless Margaret reached out to me, so I really owe Margaret a lot, or else I wouldn't have done it. So I just finished the program about six weeks ago, and I just wanted to walk through the benefits of this program, how it personally has benefited my business, and can hopefully benefit future businesses who win this wonderful scholarship. So with this program, I worked with Andy Parker from the FEC, and we worked together for a little over eight months. We met weekly. Our meetings ranged from two to four hours, sometimes four hours. And the areas that I wanted to focus on were mainly financial pieces. So this was the area that I really struggled with. I opened during COVID. I kind of just went all in and was just kind of doing the things that I didn't really know I was supposed to be doing differently, so it was kind of what you don't know, you don't know. So I truly took away from this all the financial aspects that I had on my list as to why I would be a good recipient for this program. So I left with fully understanding all of the financial aspects of House of 423, even though before I had a bookkeeper and an accountant. This was just a next level of understanding each financial piece that goes into not only opening a business, thriving, growing, and sustaining in a town, especially in the economic state that we're in. So I can only hope that this program keeps on going for our local small businesses, because business has really, really slowed down, and the pieces that we don't understand, or pieces that we don't know that we need to understand, this program gives you those tools. So in understanding the financial pieces, I got to understand the importance and the meanings of respective financial categories, giving me the hard numbers of income, cost of goods sold, gross profit, and overall expenses. These were pieces that I had some knowledge of, but in the end, I didn't fully understand how putting all these pieces together would help me get a true insight of my financial portfolio for House of 423. So not only did I understand my numbers, I understand now how to budget for future buying, the importance of marketing, and where I need to be in order to open a second location. After understanding these financial pieces, I was able to gain personal and financial confidence to launch my own line of clothing and jewelry at House of 423, which sets me apart from other local women's boutiques in the Fox Valley. During the creation of my lines, Andy was able to connect me to FEC board member John Kranek of Existence Creative. He graciously donated his time and creativity to design a new logo that would translate well on clothing and label tags and in every area of marketing. At the end of April, I had my two-year anniversary of having my shop in downtown Batavia. I celebrated with a fashion show that was sold out at Sturdy Shelter Brewing, and I launched my private label lines, including Mongolian cashmere tops, organic cotton sweaters, and gold-filled jewelry. With successful sales of the first launch, I have since added three new collections of jewelry and a European linen line. I would not be here today without receiving an email from Margaret to apply to this, and the support of the Chamber, and Andy, and all of the FEC.
Thank you for your insights into that. It's good to see the Batavia Chamber of Commerce is out helping new members really hit the ground running, so I appreciate the good efforts being put forth.
I also want to invite Andy Parker here. He is the executive director of the Fox Valley Entrepreneurship, and he's the one who facilitates our Grow Your Business Scholarship, and has done a wonderful job focusing on our Batavia businesses and helping them grow to the next level. Andy?
Thanks.
Welcome. Thanks for coming.
Wow, thank you for having me. Has anybody ever even heard of the FEC before tonight? Oh, a couple people. That's great. We're probably one of the best-kept secrets in the valley. The FEC actually started in 2011, but it actually goes back a little further than that. The Small Business Development Center at Wabansy Community College received a $150,000 grant back in 2008, 2009, if you remember the crash that happened then, to help small businesses. And the grant was used to hire consultants to go in and go deep. The SBDC at Wabansy sees anywhere between 300 and 400 clients a year, so you can imagine how much time they spend with each client. So what the SBDC did is they looked through their portfolio of clients and found the clients that they thought could really be accelerated, and then they hired the consultants to do that. Well, there was a gentleman here in town, Austin Dempsey at Batavia Enterprises, who had five of companies that were renting from him get saved through that program, and they never missed a rent payment. So when the $150,000 started to run out, Austin thought this was a good program, and so he got together with a guy named Ray Benedetto and started the Fox Valley Entrepreneurship Center. It's a non-for-profit organization. They went out and raised money, they hired consultants, and since 2011, we've helped over 65, almost 70 businesses now, which is kind of exciting for us. And we do go deep. I gave you a little handout there, just to give you an idea. There's eight companies here, and when they came to the FEC, their combined revenue was about $2 million. Today, those companies, those same eight companies are generating over $15 million. They employed 32 full-time and part-time staff. They now employ over 200, and they've received over $9.3 million in financing. So to say that we've been successful is kind of an understatement. We've done a pretty good job. And was it last year, or maybe a little longer than that, the Batavia Chamber came to us and said, hey, you know, we'd like to do something for the Chamber members, you know, help them. And so we put together a scholarship program with them. They put up 10 grand, we put up some money, the consultants come in, our consultants all get paid at about half their normal rate. So the consultants putting some skin in the game, the Chamber's putting some skin in the game, and then we're going out and raising additional money to do that. About half of our funding comes from our alumni, which is pretty exciting. The rest comes from banks and from people like Margaret. So we're just really excited to be here and continue to help the economic growth here in the area. So thanks for your time. Do you have any questions about FEC, or what we do, or how we do it?
Any questions?
Yeah.
Can you just tell us where to find more information online for anyone who is listening?
Yeah, it's FEC.org. Pretty simple. Yeah, and we're always willing to take your money, so if you'd like to help us out, that'd be great.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate your good efforts.
All right, well, thank you for having me.
Thanks, Andy. I know there was a proposal too, that there was some funds that are being considered to support funding this scholarship program, so if anybody does have additional questions about that, please let me know. It's a great program, and it really is helping where it's needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving then to item number 11, which is the video gaming license for the Batavia Moose Lodge at 1533 South Batavia Avenue. Who's got this one? Chief?
Hi, good evening again. As you might recall, back in July, the City Council approved ordinance 2327, which was an annexation agreement with 1535 South Batavia Avenue, which is a Batavia Moose Lodge. As part of that agreement, the business, the Moose Lodge, was to continue their video gaming, as well as their liquor sales on premise. We, the Batavia Police Department, went and did a background investigation, both on the liquor and the video gaming side of it, and have found no reason to deny either the liquor license or the video gaming. Earlier tonight, you had approved the liquor license, and so this is the video gaming portion of the licensing process. Anybody has any questions?
Any questions? Somebody care to make a motion for the approval of the license?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Alderman Sulfah, second of Alderman Wolf for the approval of the license. Any discussion? Alderman, er...
Yeah, I sound like a broken record every time I say this, but bring it up again, just against the video gaming, and this is a different situation, I guess, but the number just continues to creep up about how many people or how many businesses have it, and I just think it's a bad idea. I just don't think it's... And this is a different situation, I guess, but the number just continues to creep up about how many people or how many businesses have it. And I just think it's a bad idea. I just don't think it's something representative of our town. And people talk about having a nice community here, and I think that this detracts from it. So I'll be voting no.
Alderman, I...
I'm with Mark on that. Not a surprise, but especially since there's, it's about six terminals, I believe, in this one, where we had put limit before on five. So I will be voting against.
Anybody else want to make any comments? Kirk call the roll then on the motion to approve the ordinance.
Soffa?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
No.
Euer?
No.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Chanzit?
No.
Wolf?
Aye.
Nine yes, three no, two absent.
Motion's approved. All right. Moving then to item 12, which is ordinance 23-43 authorizing execution of a late lease agreement between the city of Batavia and the Chicago Industrial TT LLC for 431 North Redant Road in Batavia. This obviously involves the moving of the Batavia Food Pantry and Clothes Closet on an interim basis. Laura, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. So the Batavia Interfaith Food Pantry and Clothes Closet currently resides in a building owned by the city, and the city pays the utilities. And if you talk with the food pantry, they will attest to the fact that that arrangement is part of why they have been a sustainable organization for many decades, whereas, you know, other local food pantries struggle to continue to exist. Their current location is slated for demolition as part of the next phase of the wastewater treatment plant project that we have that will be beginning construction next month. In the meantime, the city has been fortunate to receive a $3 million grant through Congressman Lauren Underwood's office under the Community Project Funding Program, which is administered through HUD. The HUD process is kind of a lengthy process and a complicated process. We're extremely grateful to have received this funding, but it is going to take longer to work through that process than when the current location for the food pantry needs to be demolished. And therefore, we have sought out a temporary location for them. This is located at 431 North Redant in Batavia. It's like a grade A commercial space. And the food pantry, because they are so grateful for us having provided them with free space and utilities for all of these years and the promise of doing that again in the future, have offered to pay half the rent. And so the rent is $6,623.36 for the first year, and the second year is $6,888.29. And the Food Pantry and Clothes Closet Board has approved paying half of that expense during that time. So it's a two-year lease, which will allow us the time to work through the HUD process, acquire a new location for them, and also complete the build-out of that new location. And so we are recommending that City Council approves this lease. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that folks might have. Yes, Alderman, you're...
Yeah, for context on the pricing, you had mentioned like how much we're spending right now on electricity alone out at Sam's Club, because we talked about that as a location temporarily or whatever. And just for perspective on pricing, so we know, so everybody knows how much this really saves us.
Yeah, the utilities out at the Sam's Club location are $12,000 per month, and that is where we are currently housing the toy drive is there and will be there through this year's distribution. So it is quite expensive to maintain a presence over there at Sam's Club.
Will this $80,000 come out of our regular budget, or does that come out of the grant money?
We wouldn't be able to utilize grant funding for this temporary location, unfortunately. We will not be able to be reimbursed for this expense, but I've built it into my next year's budget.
Roughly $40,000 a year for our half of it?
Correct.
Any other questions from the council?
This is unrelated to the new location directly, but is the food pantry looking for volunteers to help with the move process that we might kind of advertise here?
At this point, they are not, but certainly if there is that need, then the city will definitely get that word out there. Thank you for thinking of that.
We have a motion in second, I believe, right?
We do.
We do?
We do not.
We do not?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Malay for the approval of the execution of the lease agreement. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Chanzit?
Aye.
Twelve yes, no, no, two absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, Laura, just stand at the podium and go to 13, which is the administrator's report.
Yes. So I have some updates from IDOT. As you know, they were going to conduct a speed study along Illinois Route 31 from Mooseheart to Fabian Parkway. And they conducted that in July. And they state that the study indicates that the presently posted speed limits in the corridor are the most appropriate at this time. Understandably, we were very disappointed with that result, especially when you compare speed limits in neighboring communities along Route 31 as you head through Geneva and St. Charles and similar areas with driveways, residential driveways that are emptying out onto 31. It's surprising to us that 40 and 45 miles per hour is appropriate in these areas. And so we've drafted a letter to our state-elected officials asking for their assistance in perhaps asking IDOT to reconsider their decision in that regard. One positive thing on the IDOT landscape, though, is that they have now put a 40 mile per hour speed limit sign approximately 500 to 1,000 feet south of the intersection with Millview. Previously, that sign was much closer to the intersection, and staff recommended. And we believe that being so close makes for some confusion as people are trying to approach and they see a walkway is approaching and their speed is changing. And so we're hoping that this will make safer transition in speed from the 45 to the 40 mile per hour zone more south of that intersection. The only other thing that I had was wanted to let you know that the city has been notified that it is qualified to obtain a low-interest loan from the IEPA in furtherance of the replacement of the lead service lines. And so we're very excited to, it's a 0% interest loan. It isn't forgivable like the first round, but we want to participate in this because we don't think that there will be financing opportunities like this for communities of means, such as we are, in the future, that money will be directed toward areas that have more economic distress. So we're very happy to be able to do another round of these lead service line replacements. And we can't say enough about how smoothly this contractor has been handling all of these lead service line replacements, the speed with which they did the work, in particular on Wilson, getting that done before the school year began. And so hopefully, we'll be able to continue to this work in partnership with them. And that's all that I have, unless anybody has any questions for me. Yes, Alderman, you're...
I'm assuming it's not them that are, that have 31 torn up and has been torn up...
No, that's AT&amp;T. What happened was the line, the AT&amp;T's conduit there was nicked, and that was a mistake that did happen during the lead service line replacement. But you'll notice there's an excavated area of that lane, and there's a metal plate on top of it. AT&amp;T does not feel that it is safe for people to drive over that metal plate, and that's why that lane is reduced. They have on order a part that they're waiting for, a concrete that they're waiting to be fabricated. And I'm sorry, I don't have a time. I wish I did. We keep in contact with them daily because it is a problem. Something that I did ask them to do early on, I noticed that barricades were falling down, and the mayor let me know that the lights were not on at night. And so we have asked them to check on that daily to make sure that all of those barricades are in their proper place and functioning.
Thank you.
Yes, Alderman Baron?
To kind of go back to the, you know, speed and the mitigation, in some of my travels, and this is something that maybe staff might want to look into, as we look at mitigate, for some mitigation, even on 31 and throughout the neighborhoods, our speed tables. I know in one area, it was very effective with a lot of traffic. And I don't know if there's maybe even the opportunity to get a temporary one to test it out in different areas, because I do know that one that I went over was not a permanent one. It was a temporary one, and it was like a number of different speed tables. So I'd like to, you know, present that recommendation suggestion to you.
And then it was mentioned in the weekly report about having a discussion about utilizing the ARPA funding to assist with these scholarships. Is that a discussion that you would like to see on a future meeting?
I think it would be beneficial.
Good. Okay. I'll put it on the next COW agenda.
Any other comments from the council on their administrator's report?
Thank you very much.
I just want to add, Laura's correct. I have been talking to her two or three times about this situation up at McKee and Batavia Avenue. One night I came down there, I've been checking this every night. And one night I came down there, and there was one of the standards standing up with its light flashing. The rest of them were totally brown, down. And so I went and complained to Gary Holm about it, and I know he got on the phone, and I think he got a lot of change to it. But I'm dismayed about the time this is taking. And I've had several senior citizens tell me that they know they have hit those barricades and knocked them over. And it seems like a day doesn't pass that somebody hasn't knocked one of those over and it's laying on its side. So it's, I feel like I should send a letter to somebody and say, this hasn't been a well-done job. I mean, specifically the company that's providing the flashing warning lights. I don't know what they think they're doing there, but they're sitting there in the dark all night long. And, you know, we've got a pretty good-sized senior citizen population living in Batavia now with six separate senior citizen living communities in town. And some of those folks are out driving around, and they find that trying to make that turn either onto McKee or off of McKee quite troubling. And then they got this big, now they put a big arrow up north of the intersection that supposedly tells you where to go, that what lanes are available. But it's just a bad situation, and the time it's taken, I have not seen a job like this on a state highway in a long time. So I'm just venting my frustration and let the citizens know that the city is aware of this and is doing everything we can. I know the police department, and several times I've come down at 10 o'clock at night and spoken to one or two of the officers, and they immediately go up and set the barricades back up that have been knocked down. And of course, the lights aren't flashing. But this is, I guess I would describe this as very poorly handled by the contractors who are doing this. So that's my two cents. Thank you, Laura. Moving to 14 other businesses. Is anybody in the council anything they wish to bring up? All right. We'll go get it over with here quick. Go to the mayor's report. Along the lines of what I just talked about, it's Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, where I serve as the chairman of the Council of Mayors. I get to sit in on a variety of meetings, and I recently sat in on a briefing from the IDOT people. And they are of the opinion, and this may have already happened, that this year in Illinois, we are going to set an all-time record for the number of traffic fatalities that have occurred on state highways. And we're real near it right now, if it hasn't already been broken by just the volumes we've had. And needless to say, we've had a couple in Batavia. And, you know, we're not used to this. And I don't know, I don't think I need, I want to blame IDOT because I'm not sure it's their fault, but we certainly have gotten our society into the idea that they can drive about as fast as they want to fast on any street or any highway. I had to go today to a meeting up in Arlington Heights, and I took 355, and I deliberately kept my car at the illegally public speed limit there, whatever it was. And I think between when I got on, down, off of 88 till I got up to 90, I counted, and I got passed by 56 cars and trucks in that period because I was driving the speed limit, and they were going faster than the speed limit around me. So there is this idea out there now in our world that we drive very, very fast. And the chief of police and I have had several conversations, and I know they're doing, setting up speed monitoring situations and everything else, and are starting to write some pretty good tickets for it. And I just hope people realize what they're doing with all this speed that we're putting onto the highways themselves. And it is, it's an interesting situation to see people come off a rando road onto McKee Street or Wilson or Main, and that seems to be one, somebody's really interested in either getting in or out of Batavia. And they're driving real heavy-duty on those particular highways. And certainly over on the east side, Kirk Road has some real interesting speeds over at Fabian Parkway. And they also have some at the, what's the name of the street there that goes off of Wagner onto Kirk? That's where they got the traffic signal. I just, you live right next to it, Alderman. Wind Energy. Wind Energy Pass. I've seen some real high-flying situations on that one. So I guess I'm putting the word out that the city is pressuring our people to take enforcement actions on these folks, and that we're not giving anybody any, we'll forgive you for what you've done. We don't seem to be able to get people in the mood that they want to slow down. And as a result, we've had some fatal accidents, and that's not a good thing for our town to have, nor anybody else in the state. And Illinois is going to set a new record this year for traffic fatalities in this state. So I think everybody should be made aware of it. So I'm going to leave my comments tonight to that one subject, because I feel strongly enough about it that we really do have a problem, and we are intending to do some stuff about it in the days ahead. And I want the council to know that, and I think most of you I've talked to are in agreement that this is a bad situation. We got going here with everybody running around here at 60, 55, 60, 70 miles an hour, even on some of our major side streets. So we want to do something. So somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?